Okay, it's 6:45. We have a long meeting, so let's get started. We start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Sinks. Councilmember Willie. Councilmember Paul. Vice Mayor Chow.
Here.
Mayor Scharf.
Here. Okay, we're starting with ceremonial matters. The first one is a presentation from Toyokawa Sister City delegation regarding the recent student exchange. So, welcome. Welcome, Alisa.
Mayor Scharf, Vice Mayor Chow, council members and city staff, thank you for having us. I'm Alisa Sakas. I'm the president of the Cupertino Toyokawa Sister Cities. And with me are many members of my committee. You can see us wearing pink shirts. Wave your hands. There's lots of people here. And I'd also like to recognize this year's delegate families. Please raise your hands. We'd really like to thank you for all of your support. You play a very, very important role in continuing our homestay tradition and making this a great experience for our visitors. We are here now at kind of the end of our delegation year. These students are in our program for nearly a year. And we recently hosted sixteen students and three chaperones to our city. Thank you to the city for your tremendous support of our program. We really couldn't do without you. And a special thanks to Brian Babcock. I didn't see him here, but for all the help he does, being the liaison between us and the city staff. So, I wanted to tell you a little bit about our sister city and to some of the people in the audience who might not know. Toyokawa, Japan is one of our four sister cities. The relationship was established in seventy-eight by then-mayor Yamamoto, who wanted a Californian sister city. So, he kind of approached us. And he also picked us because we were similar in size and demographics. Fast forward to now, we've been sister cities for forty-one years. Toyokawa is much larger than Cupertino because they've annexed in land from around the city. So, they cover sixty-two square miles and their population is over a hundred and eighty thousand people. The closest major city is Nigoya, and they have varied industry, lots of small family farms, and Toyota's probably the major employer there. In the bottom left, you see a picture. That's back from nineteen eighty-three, when the mayor of Toyokawa came over and Cupertino's mayor, Gatto, planted the very first cherry blossom tree in Memorial Park. A little bit about our organization. Our committee consists of some forty residents living in Cupertino and in the Cupertino Union School District attendance area. We have three major programs that we conduct. The Cherry Blossom Festival, which is the last two days in April, the last weekend in April. Our annual student exchange for seventh and eighth graders that attend CUSD schools. We have CUSD employees as the chaperones. And the Adult Cultural Exchange, which happens every five years. And that photo shown is from last year, two thousand eighteen, when Darcy Paul was mayor. He led the delegation. So, that's a photo from our last trip that we took last year. We also participate in some of the other events, like Cupertino's Rotary's Fall Festival and the Cupertino Volunteer Fair. A little bit more, some fun facts about Toyokawa. So, Toyokawa is most well-known in Japan for its Inari Temple. So, Inari is the deity of foxes, rice, household well-being, and prosperity. And the Toyokawa Inari Temple is the lead temple of all of the Inari temples in Japan. There's many, many Inari temples in Japan, so it's the primary temple. Likely, you've sampled Inari sushi at a Japanese restaurant. It's that kind of sweet handheld sushi that's packed in a little pocket of fried tofu. There's a picture of it there. And in two thousand nine, Toyokawa got a new mascot. His name's Inarin, and you can see him there. He's half, he's a hybrid between a fox and an Inari sushi. And the last picture on the right there, it's kind of hard to tell, but Toyokawa is also well-known for these handheld fountain fireworks called Tazetsu Hanabe. And it's kind of become a rite of passage for eighteen-year-old boys and women now to build these handheld fireworks and blast them off at a festival in July. And Councilmember Paul actually got to bring one home, which we now display at our Cherry Blossom Festival every year. We didn't have one, so now our, the city of Cupertino has one. Other fun facts, Toyokawa gifted us two hundred cherry blossom trees back in eighty-three. Many of them are still, can be found in Memorial Park. Our exchange program is the longest running in our city. It's been going since nineteen eighty-three, and there's only two years where exchanges were not conducted. The first was in two thousand and one because that trip would have happened right after nine eleven. And the other one was in two thousand and eleven, where due to the tsunami and earthquake, they postponed that delegation trip until the following year. We're really proud that we're trying, starting to see some fun things, like second-generation delegates. We're starting to get delegates that are the children of former delegates we've had. We've had two delegate chaperone leaders who were middle-school delegates themselves. When they are in middle school, that's kind of cool. And we have Kento over here. Raise your hand. He is from Toyokawa, and he is now an exchange student here at Dianza and is on our committee. So, we're really, really happy about this strong connection we have with our sister city. I'll put this up, this slide gives some references to learn more about our organization and some videos. Please, please take a look at those. And if anyone else would like to join our committee, we're always looking for new members. In a moment, you're going to hear from the members of our two thousand and nineteen delegation. We asked each student to give you, share one of their most memorable or their favorite aspects of their participation in our student exchange. So, you'll hear that. But before they do, I want to introduce one of our delegates, Anish Lakapragada, who will give you some context into the exchange, the hosting that we just did. This photo's from Cherry Blossom Festival, when we presented all the student delegates, and many of you are in that photo. But I'm going to have Anish come up here and give a little context, and then all the other students will speak too. Anish, so there's the pageboard.
So, what happened when the Toyokawa delegates were hosted? So, there are fun social gatherings with the whole delegation. So, in the bottom, the bottom-left photo, you'll see a photo of them at the barbecue after the dance. There are also group tours to places like Peds in My Heart, Kennedy Middle School, and the Golden Gate Bridge for them to truly get a slice of what American lifestyle is like in the Bay Area. And so, the bottom-right photo is a photo of them having a tour of the Golden Gate Bridge. And they also had two additional full days to spend with the Cupertino delegates and their families. So, what exactly were those two days like? So, a lot of the families took them to tech company headquarters, like Facebook and Google's headquarters, along with the Apple Visitor Center. They also may have taken them to Great America to, for them to truly understand what American rollercoaster thrill is like. And in order for them to truly understand what the taste of an American hamburger and french fries as a meal, as like a lunch would be, they could, In-N-Out and McDonald's would be the place for that. There's mall stores like Target and Walmart that were shown to them so that they could understand how American shopping was, in contrast to that back in Japan. And some may even taken them to a beach if they wanted to. So, my favorite experience about this whole delegation program was being able to tour Kanaya High School in Japan and being able to create some incredible friendships that are still very much alive today.
Hello, my name is Maya Swaminathan, and I am an eighth grader at Miller Middle School. Probably my most memorable experience at Japan was being able to eat as a family with our host, with our host family. And it really made me feel welcomed into Toyokawa. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Anna, and I currently go to Hyde Middle School. One memory I made was the time when my Japanese friends and I celebrated the Star Festival. We wore kimonos, which were way more complex than I thought, and we also played with fireworks.
Hi, my name is Guha Sriram. I'm currently a freshman at Archbishop Mini High School, and I represent Cupertino Middle School. One memorable moment was when our host grandparents showed us real samurai weapons in their house that were actually used. I thought this was really unique because you can't really do that here, and it's really, yeah, a unique experience. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Vivian. I went, I go to Cupertino, or sorry, Hyde Middle School. I, one of the most memorable things that I did over there was spending time with the family and getting to know them, and yeah.
Hi, my name is Sophie Jaquish, and I'm an eighth grader, and I go to Miller Middle School. One of the most memorable things in Toyokawa, Japan was sleeping on tummy mats on the ground. I found that really interesting because people don't really do that here. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Mahika Loda. I go to Lawson Middle School, and I'm an eighth grader. And something that I found really interesting in Japan was that, as a host family, we stayed up in the night and watched Disney movies together.
Hi, my name is Paulina Chin Wong. I am currently a freshman at Limbrook High School, and I represented Miller Middle School as a part of the delegation. My personal favorite moment about traveling to Japan was the last day of my stay with the host family. And we got to make mochi, and we played a couple Japanese hand games.
Hello, my name is Ashley Lynn, and I'm an eighth grader at Kennedy Middle School. One of my most memorable memories would be watching the students at Kanaya Junior High School cleaning the school and actually making their own lunch. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Juliana Kim. I currently go to Mona Vista High School, and I represented Kennedy Middle School. One of the most memorable things about this was going to Great America and hosting the kids and getting to spend time with them the whole day, as it really, I think, strengthened our bond. And I definitely think I made lifelong friends. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kevin Zhao. I'm an eighth grader at Cupertino Middle School. I think the most memorable experience of my entire trip was, I guess, just spending time and going places with my host family because I got to see how they generally spent their days and, you know, how they lived compared to here in Cupertino. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Luke Nguyen. I cur, I am a current eighth grader at Cupertino Middle School. And my favorite experience while I was in Japan was being able to make mochi traditionally with my host family.
Hello, my name is Tanya Kamau. I was a chaperone for the delegation. I currently teach at Miller Middle School. And I think my favorite part of this whole trip was watching these kids and the delegation from Japan create this bond that will last forever. I think that's something special, and all of you are part of it. So, thank you for making this trip happen for them.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Brunner, and I'm also the, a chaperone, or was a chaperone for the two thousand and nineteen Cupertino Toyokawa delegation. And there are so many things I would like to share with you, but the main thing, I guess, is just pretty much what Tanya said. It's the bonds, it's the friendships that were made, and I know they're going to continue for a lifetime. The host families were so gracious, and it was just a wonderful, wonderful experience. I'll just tell you one thing. I did, did the tub, is a little different. And you share the same water, and then one person goes in, and then the next person goes in. And that was very different, and Mrs. Kamau and I, we shared the same bathwater, just as, because that's what they do in Japan. So, that was kind of very memorable, and I will never forget that. And on behalf of the whole delegation, the Cupertino Toyokawa delegation, we would like to present the city of Cupertino this book that we made, and it has all of our memories put together. And we'd like to share that with you and give that to you as a gift. So, thank you again for supporting this wonderful program.
Great. Can we get a picture of the council with all the students up on the stage? Okay, the next presentation is Fine Arts Commission presentation of the two thousand and nineteen Distinguished and Emerging Artist winners. Welcome.
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council members. I'm very happy to present the Distinguished Artist and the Emerging Artist winners this evening. Basically, Distinguished Artist and Emerging Artist is a group that we have been celebrating for a very long time. And let me call them so that they can get their awards from the mayor. For the Distinguished Artist, Divya Ebby is the Platinum Distinguished Artist winner. Divya? Again, for the Platinum Award winner, she gets thousand dollars as well as a plaque. That's more important. The Gold Distinguished Artist winner is Kaia Sang. No? Okay, is she there? We are very happy to announce that this time we did get a good number of entries, and it was a tough job judging. So, now moving along, the Platinum Emerging Artist winner is Alicia Gal. She is out of the country, and she is represented here by her dad. Thank you. She gets a check of seven hundred and fifty dollars. The next, the Gold Emerging Artist winner is John Dorance. We also had quite a number of entries, as I mentioned. And so, we have given Emerging Artist honorable mentions. Alicia Sai. Nidi Mogharia. All of their artwork are displayed in the Distinguished Wall and the Emerging Artist Wall at the Cupertino City Library, so please go and take a look. The last Emerging Artist Honorable Mention is Zara Wakat. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, the City Council members. So, can we have a picture with the, all the winners? Thank you. I would also call upon my members, Sonia Dhami, as well as Diana Maitli. We represent the Fine Arts Commission of Cupertino, and I'm Raji Mahalingam. Thank you.
Okay, our third presentation is a five-minute presentation on pedestrian safety by Divergent Debuggers First LEGO League Robotics Team. Welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and good evening, honorable city officials. We are the Divergent Debuggers, and we are a LEGO Robotics team. We are here to present our innovation project on pedestrian safety. And we would love to take any feedback that you have, any suggestions, any of that. We will be presenting in a skit, so can you let us know where we can present our skit?
Yeah, you can come up on the stage here.
Okay, thank you. And finally, thank you for giving us this opportunity.
Sure, okay. Yeah, just face the audience, and we will see it on the video screen.
Good evening. We are, my name is Jay.
My name is Nusita.
Hold on, and they'll give you a microphone, a portable microphone.
Good evening. My name is Jay.
My name is Nusita.
My name's Kusa.
My name is Nikhil.
And my name is Sarath.
And we are the Divergent Debuggers. Our project is pedestrian safety. Each year, over five thousand pedestrians die because of the limitations of current traffic lights.
Long ago, before there were traffic signals, police officers used to direct traffic through intersections. This was useful in some ways because the human mind can see when someone is waiting to cross the intersection and also determine how long it might take for someone to do so.
Nowadays, timer-based systems and sensor-based systems are there. Timer-based systems are when pedestrians are given a specific amount of time to cross. During this crossing, sometimes they cannot reach the limit because of they're injured or they're old.
Currently, it is on the walk sign, meaning that the pedestrian can cross, but he only has thirty seconds, and he is a weak, old man. The timer has ended, meaning that the green light is given to the cars. Later, induction systems were introduced, which were placed under the, under the roads, which would, which when a car was sensed, would send a certain signal to the stop signs, changing them from red to green respectively. Though these are very effective and useful, they cannot be used for pedestrians as pedestrians do not weigh enough, and they are not made of metal. Right now, it is in walk, and he is able to cross. But because the timer has run out, and because the cars are stepping on the induction cables, and they can sense them, it is immediately given the green. Thankfully, we have a solution. When a pedestrian presses their button to cross the road, and when their signal is given, a smart camera can be activated. This camera can track their progress across the road and give them enough time to cross the road completely before giving the traffic signal for cars. Using machine learning and neural networks, cameras such as Amazon's Deep Lens can be used to identify if a person is on the road or not. Now, let's look at the scenario with a smart camera. Currently, the sign, the sign is on walk, and the pedestrian is able to cross. Even though the induction system is being activated by the cars, and the timer has run out, the stop signs will still remain at walk and be able to give him enough time to cross the road. Only after he has finished will the cars be allowed to go forward. Every year, over five thousand million people die from pedestrian accidents. We are hoping that our, that our product will be able to solve these, solve these problems and save many lives in the future. Thank you for listening to our presentation. We would also like to thank you for your time. And if you have any questions or suggestions, we would love to take them.
Okay, thank you. I think we'll have our IOT people look at this when we, when we move into our 5G systems in the city because we will, we'll be putting in a lot of smart sensors for things like traffic and environmental monitoring. Oh, thank you.
Thank you too.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are on to oral communications. Each person gets three minutes. I have four cards right now. If you'd like to speak, we'd appreciate a blue card, although it's not required. We'll start with Sandy James, followed by Dennis Whitaker, followed by Brooke Azot. Welcome, former Mayor James.
Thank you, Mayor Scharf, Vice Mayor Lan Chow, and City Council. I'm here tonight representing the Cupertino Veterans Memorial Foundation. And as you know, we built the Veterans Memorial here in Cupertino. And annually, we do a Veterans Day ceremony. So, I'm here to invite all of you to come next Monday, and the community also, and our new city manager, who, this will be her first one, I know. This year, we have Admiral Winston Copeland as one of our speakers, the Honorable Francis Harvey, the Nineteenth Secretary of the Army. And of course, as you know, every year, we also honor not only veterans and active-duty military, but our first responders. So, the Sheriff's Department sends an honor guard, the Fire Department sends an honor guard, and we have a military honor guard also. Especially this year, since we lost our former city manager, Dave Knapp. His wife Kay will be with us, and she will be carrying one of the bouquets. Did you know that during our ceremony, we have three, two Gold Star families, and one other person carry bouquets up to the sculpture? So, Kay will be here representing her family and also city staff and the community in a way to honor Dave, who was a big part of us being able to build this memorial, and also veteran himself. So, again, I invite you all to come. The mayor will give a short, some short comments that day. The weather is supposed to be beautiful, so please come and help us honor our veterans, our active-duty military, our first responders, who have been very busy this year. busy this year, and all the rest of you that helped us put this affair together. It's, oh, it's Monday, Veterans Day, November 11th at 11 o'clock. So 11, 11, 11. It's from 11 to 12:30. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Dennis Whitaker, followed by Brooke Azot, followed by Keith Craft. Welcome, Dennis Whitaker.
I want to introduce our commander of our American Legion Post, David Hahn, who will try to get this on the screen for you. Mayor, City Council members and staff, I'm a resident of Cupertino of 45 years, a Vietnam combat veteran, and an active member of the Cupertino American Legion Stevens Creek Post 642. Four years ago, Cupertino resident Mike McNutt, a Marine, involved our American Legion Post with a nationally recognized event called Rees Across America, and it was held at the Gate of Heaven Cemetery in Los Altos Hills. The Rees are manufactured in New England and transported to 1,400-plus cemeteries across the nation. The Rees are laid on veterans' gravesites across the nation, all on the same Saturday in December. Three years ago, signs were made to be placed across Stevens Creek Boulevard, as well as at the Memorial Park on Stevens Creek. The sign across Stevens Creek Boulevard was placed, but the sign at Memorial Park was never placed. After talking to Parks and Rec, I was told there might be problems with the sign at Memorial Park since the event is held outside the city limits. I attended the Parks and Recreation Meeting on January 2018, and I had to leave the meeting early, but others from our post voiced their concerns, and I never heard back from the Parks and Rec Commission. On December 2018, the sign again was still never posted at Memorial Park. Therefore, I'm requesting the City Council to create and pass a resolution allowing for our city's recognition and support of the annual event Rees Across America at the Gate of Heaven Cemetery, as long as the event is sponsored or co-sponsored by our Cupertino American Legion Post 642. After all, the Gate of Heaven Cemetery is protected by our Cupertino Sheriff and Fire Department. After all, I don't believe the city maintains a cemetery where Cupertino veterans and other veterans can be laid. After all, the city has many veterans buried at the Gate of Heaven Cemetery, and after all, veterans made sacrifices so we can enjoy our Cupertino way of life. Please remember, our freedom was paid for and at the expense of veterans. And I'd like you to please consider the resolution. I also want to invite you to attend our event on December 14th at 10 o'clock, emceed by Sandy James, our former City Council lady and former mayor, who was also in charge of the Veterans Day event, and you just heard from her. A personal note, July 27, 1971, I was the first lieutenant onboard a helicopter with four helicopters behind me, and we lifted off on a mission. We sat back down. The company commander walked over, took me off the helicopter, because I'd been in combat for six months, put another lieutenant in my place. The helicopters lifted off within seconds. 10 minutes later, that first helicopter hit a booby trap, killed that lieutenant. Four days later, three other of my platoon members were on the first helicopter going into another mission, and they were ambushed and killed. So for this reason, veteran sacrifices are and have been real. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. So could our city manager take a note to see what we can do about the plaque there? Thank you. Next, I have Brooke Azot, followed by Keith Craft, followed by Jim Moore. Welcome, Brooke.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm here to talk about good governance and transparency. In the last several years, I've been attending city council meetings, and I've noticed that there have been, there's been a parade of former city council members, former mayors, and former city employees advocating certain commercial products. I know that the FPPC requires a year between the time you leave office or the time you leave your position before you can lobby. And I'm asking that the city would consider extending that and that lobbyists be forced to identify themselves so that the process is transparent. Secondly, regarding housing allocations, I'm asking that the council would consider putting an expiration date on the housing allocations. I know that one WAG has said that it's easy to get housing approved, it's difficult to get it built. And we have a lot of housing allocations that are out there that haven't been acted on, and they shouldn't be hoarded like crazy cat people hoard cats. Third, I'm asking that we have completion bonds for housing so that the housing that goes to the Planning Commission, that goes to the council, is actually the housing that's been, that's built, that we don't have housing approved that's quote-unquote affordable, and then we turn around and discover that we have luxury condos instead. And finally, I hope that the council would consider imposing a vacancy tax on units so that we can have more housing on the market. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brooke. Next, I have Keith Craft, followed by Jim Moore, followed by Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Keith.
Good evening. My name is Keith Craft. I live on Wilkinson, five houses in from Hyannis Port, right behind Kennedy Junior High. Some refer to this as the tri-school area. I have two neighborhood traffic issues that I'd like to touch on this evening. First, for the third two years that I've lived on Wilkinson, our street has been plagued with congestion in the mornings, with parents making illegal U-turns. This map is referring to a second issue I'll talk about, not the first one. So we've had, congestion is so bad in that neighborhood, I'm sure you've heard it before, vehicles are making U-turns on our street, which is especially dangerous to the kids that are actually trying to bike down our street and to get to school. The new no-turn-on-red signs at the intersection of McClellan and Bub are adding to the morning congestion. Bub Road gets backed up from McClellan to Hyannis Port every morning, and I trust you're familiar with these new no-turn-on-red signs. After dropping their kids off, a high percentage of vehicles want to turn right on the McClellan heading east from Bub at the corner of the 711. Making vehicles wait for a green light to turn is causing a greater backup, worsening the morning congestion. We need to do a better job letting the traffic out of the area. The no-turn-on-red signs are working against this. Frankly, I'm not sure whether these no-turn-on-red signs are really needed. If there are bikers waiting in these new left-turn boxes, I'm sure vehicles are going to respect their presence and not run over them. Just FYI, I haven't seen any bikers in any of those boxes yet. And alternatively, if turning right on red is deemed a real problem, when bikers are in the box, we could add a "when bikers are present" postscript to a no-turn-on-red sign. The second traffic issue on our street is fairly new. Vehicles traveling south on 280, now we can refer to the map. Vehicles traveling south on 280 that want to travel south on 85 are being rerouted by ways through my neighborhood during the evening rush hours. They come in streams, they race through the neighborhood, some at 35, 40 miles an hour. To avoid the jammed-up merge at 85 and 280, they exit at Foothill, now you can look at the map, they exit at Foothill, travel down Foothill to McClellan, and then run through the side streets to reach Rainbow to get back on Deans Boulevard over here. The red is my street, running past Wilkinson, but the orange, what's shown in orange are some of the alternate routes that they're taking. This starts at around 3:30 and doesn't end until 7 o'clock at night. Wilkinson seems to be one of the favorite routes, as it doesn't have any speed bumps or mitigating center dividers. The Montevista Track Team uses Wilkinson as one of their evening jogging rides. I think it's just a matter of time before somebody gets hit. We probably can't change the volume of traffic, but we need to slow them down. I think speed bumps on Wilkinson is probably the answer. I don't know if this is something that falls in your jurisdiction.
Our Director of Public Works is here, and I see him copiously taking notes on this. And hopefully, yeah, I mean, it's one of my pet peeves, is the traffic and the ways cut-throughs as well. And I'm not sure, even if ways took it off, now everybody knows about those cut-throughs. But yeah, we will have the Director of Public Works look into this.
I don't think we can stop it, but we've got to slow it down. Some speed bumps, and maybe speed bumps on steroids or something, you know, not those little wimpy ones. You've got some over there near Palm that will...
Right, we need some kind of traffic calming.
I hear you.
Maybe we can put this on a future agenda.
Thank you.
To talk about traffic calming. Thank you. All right, I think he gave it, yeah, you gave the map to Roger, correct? Okay, thank you. Next, we have Jim Moore, followed by Connie Cunningham, followed by Carol Gorska. Welcome, Jim.
I've been in, my name is Jim Moore, and again, thanks for giving me some time tonight. There's a lot of hillside development that is taking place or is proposed to be taking place. And I've noted that, again, there are a lot of slope numbers in there. And I had to go back to my books from college days and just take a look and see some of the basics. And I wanted just to cover that because we're all going to see a lot of different percent slope numbers as far as for roadways and for homesites and for trails and all that. And so I just wanted to run through some basics on that. First of all, percent slope is the rise over the run. That's how it's defined. And you can also look at it as far as percent slope is the length of something over the elevation difference. That applies to a home site, that applies to a street. Be aware that percent slope is not the same as the degrees of slope, which is an angle. They are very, very different. Percent slope, you can calculate very easily with what I've shown here. Degrees of slope takes trigonometry and some pretty, in a sense, complicated math. That's why I've put this link to an online tool that calculates all that. That's what I use. I don't go back to any of the math that I learned in college. So you can calculate the degrees of slope, you can also get the percent slope from that particular tool. Here's some examples. There's an ADA guideline that is 5% slope. That's the law in many states. That's the greatest amount of slope you can have for a ramp or for a sidewalk that's going to be accessible by somebody with a disability. The actual recommendation for those ramps and for those sidewalks is only 3% slope. That's what they recommend. Because some people have difficulty that have a disability doing a 5% slope. Last example is one that's close to me. I live on Lindy Lane. And if you look at the length of Lindy Lane from the Lindy Place intersection, which is right near where I live, to another intersection that's further down the hill, Carabella, that's 900 feet long, and there's a 62-foot elevation difference. And when you look at the percent slope of that section that goes past my house, that's a 7% slope. Now, it's interesting that even with just a 7% slope, we don't get many solicitors. They don't come and knock on our door. And we get a few and sometimes no trick-or-treaters. They don't want to deal with the hill either. I hope that was useful as far as just percent slope numbers and that, because we'll see more of that in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Connie Cunningham, followed by Carol Gorska, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Connie.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. The topic that I wanted to cover today was on Apple's donation of $2.5 billion to affordable housing.
Sorry, billion?
I know.
Oh, I thought you said million.
Oh, billion. I saw the B. Yeah, it's great, yes. In August of 2016, Tim Cook had an interview with the Washington Post, and he said that Apple's goal was to change the world for the better. That he had three buckets that he pulled items out of every day to think about: people, strategy, and execution. To him, people were the most important. I found that very exciting. At that time, I was concerned about homeless that I had started to see in our neighborhoods. And in April of 2017, I wrote an open letter to the Cupertino Courier, which was published, and it was an open letter to Tim Cook, asking him to donate land and money to help with affordable homes. Then Governor Newsom asked the technical people to provide money and land. Tim Cook said $2.5 billion. That followed after Google and Cisco and others who've already stepped up to Governor Newsom's challenge. Tim Cook said in that article yesterday that it is Apple's profound civic responsibility to ensure that Silicon Valley remains a vibrant place where people can live. I want to take this opportunity now to thank the Council, Cupertino Council, for its work agenda item for this year, for ELI Housing. It was a fantastic action to take on, and I know that that's moving forward as I speak. I want now to take this time to urge the Council to add for their work agenda for 2020, another affordable housing project. They are very much needed in our town. We have not had many except the Veranda, which opened recently. And I'd like to see us continue to build, especially in this exciting time when we have all the major players stepping up. If I didn't say I'm Connie Cunningham, and I'm a resident of Cupertino and I'm speaking for myself only, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Connie. And next, we have Carol Gorska, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Carol.
Hello, Mayor Scharf and City Council. I'm Carol Gorska, a local resident. I'm speaking for myself only. And I apologize, this is, I hope not too incoherent, but my bottom line is that the way we do everything matters and fairness matters at all levels. Every day, I turn on the news and I hear about the rise of strong men all over the world with oligarchs and corporations pulling strings in the background so the rich get richer and the poor get poorer. I see horrific images of natural disasters everywhere because of climate change, and yet the response is woefully inadequate. Why are these things happening? Greed. I'm not a Christian, but I'm a big fan of Christian values. And right now, the ones sorely lacking are loving and caring for your neighbor and the natural world that gives us life. I'm also a big fan of democratic values and social justice, very Christian-like concepts, even if Christ didn't happen to mention them in the Gospels. Why do we want to take this beautiful state and turn it into New Delhi, inviting drought, wildfires, landslides, blackouts, and just plain misery because we've got too many people living too close together? Note that we have plenty of spaces across the nation where jobs would help and aren't already overcrowded. Why does our state pass laws that cynically say they're trying to help with a housing crisis when in fact they are just enabling a feeding frenzy for greedy developers, as none of these laws limit office and therefore job and population growth? Why do we need to build mansions where they ought not to be, because it's too steep, inviting landslides, where plentiful wetting water is already iffy, and where there would be no easy escape route from fire? Why do you need to build dozens of houses rather than the four our general plan says you can? Greed. And why do we have processes for applying for general plan amendments if we don't follow them? If we follow them, it's fair and democratic. If we do it sometimes and not others, it's not fair. We've had too many instances of our planning department saying, oops, I forgot, even signing affidavits to that effect, yet the so-called sloppiness continues. Some developers get more fairness than others. Why? Because some lead to rewards and better resumes? That's greed too. Why does it matter? Because when we don't play fair, we give away power to the already powerful and make life less fair and less livable for the rest of us. And when it's happening at the local, state, national, and international levels, we are doomed. Let's be fair and let's not let greed whirl the world. Let's start right here in our city, Cupertino. Let's be fair and do the right thing, even when it's hard. We don't have to let greed win just because the rest of the world is, we can do better than that. Thank you.
Wow, thank you, Carol. Next, we have Lisa Warren, and that's the last card I have. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. Thank you, Carol. That's a tough act to follow. I just have a few bullet points. One, if you're interested in Flint Center and the lack of it and what will possibly replace it, there is a meeting next Tuesday, November 12th, at 4:00 p.m. Please, if you can at all, make it to give input in any way. That would be great. It's on D ends the campus, and there's information online where you can get the exact location. Driving in our city. I was in a situation where I wasn't living in the city for a few, for months. And I've come back recently, and I cannot tell you the dissatisfaction I have with so many drivers, bicyclists, and pedestrians in this city. It's crazy. There's no, very little acknowledgement of what rules are. There's selfish behavior or just stupid behavior, but it boils down to dangerous. And I, you know, particularly as it's getting darker at night, and this gentleman speaking of the 3 to 7 range, it's dark half of that time, and it only is worse because our streets aren't that well-lit, at least the ones I travel at night. So please, everyone, remind yourself or learn what the rules of safety are and practice them for the sake of all of us. Third bullet point, just for oral communications, is I would like to request that the City Council agendize something where we can review the housing bills that have just been passed and signed by Governor Newsom and find a good, clean way where we can start looking at them very closely and adjust our regulations, municipal code, ordinances, et cetera, as much as we possibly can to not be a sitting duck, which some of it we have no control over. But we can, I'm convinced we can do something, and I think a discussion needs to start now. And so I'm hoping you'll agendize something along those lines, if I made that clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Is there anyone else that didn't submit a card that would like to speak during oral communications? Okay, welcome. So this is not on an agenda item, right? This is, if it's on an agenda item, you'll have another chance to speak. Okay, thank you. So were you speaking not on an agenda item? Okay, I guess you're okay. Okay, we are on to reports by council and staff. This is only reports on our official committee assignments. We'll have time later for reports on other activities and events we attended. So would you like to start, Councilperson Willie?
So no committee assignments this week, but Planning Commission meeting, Legislative Action meeting, and the Poverty Workshop.
Okay. Councilmember Paul?
So on October 22nd, Mayor and I attended the Audit Committee, of which we're both members. We went over a number of items, including the Treasurers' report. There was an interesting item regarding the potential divestment of fossil fuels from our investment portfolio. And I think essentially, we're doing what we can already with regard to that. Most of the discussion items in terms of the amount of monetary allocation had to do with pension liability items, which of course is a major part of most municipalities' portfolios. And Chair Schmidt and I of the Audit Committee are on a subcommittee looking to what other cities are, including in their budgets, to try to get some guidance as to best practices. The next day, on October 23rd, I attended the Santa Clara Valley Water Commission's meeting. On October 24th, the following day, the Library District JPA Board meeting took place, and we had the end-of-the-year fiscal report. And one of the items that affects all of the different libraries in the system was a revised behavior policy, which was pretty interesting. I think they did a good job of crafting some good leeway for the local discretion of librarians in terms of making sure that, you know, the respective libraries are monitored in a good but compassionate manner. Later that day, we had a library working group meeting that affected our potential usage of the space in the future. As a member, one of the two members of the council that are liaisons to our sister and friendship committees, I did have an opportunity to go to China from October 26th to 30th. Our friendship city, Shenning, invited our mayor to the International Tea Conference taking place there. And so that invitation went to the other member of our council, the Vice Mayor, who wasn't able to make it. But I was able to carve out a few days, which is a very, very fascinating and interesting experience. On November 1st, the Shenzhou delegation, speaking of sister cities, held its farewell dinner, and there was a student delegation from Shenzhou visiting us as they do on an annual basis. So those were my committee assignments.
Great. Councilmember Sinks.
Thank you. The only one I have that's part of my official capacity is Silicon Valley Clean Energy held a press conference today talking about grid resilience. We have a RFP out for some starter projects with East Bay Community Energy and also with Peninsula Clean Energy. So we are working on the massive problem of trying to make our electricity supply both green and more reliable. Thank you.
Hey, Vice Mayor.
So I attended a lunch and a dinner by the Shenzhou sister city delegates and also the Legislative Review Committee, where we reviewed the bills that passed and the bills that the governor vetoed. And we discussed some bill ideas. It was surprising the governor vetoed SB 5, which would have provided a mechanism to raise funding for affordable housing. The reason seems to be he is unwilling to commit general fund to backfill the cities for the funding the city will lose through this process. So there is another bill, also the governor vetoed, because he is unwilling to divert general fund for things that the local government actually need. So it was disappointing, his priority.
Okay. I attended the airplane noise meeting in Santa Clara. One of the things we discussed at this meeting was the return of supersonic aircraft, which is being planned. Everyone knows the Concorde is no longer operating, but airlines and aircraft manufacturers are planning to bring back supersonic passenger planes. Now, they have promised there would not be sonic booms. They're calling them sonic thuds. So, yes, I'm not making that up. So we discussed that, gave our feedback, we're going to give our feedback to the FAA and to our congresspeople. We also, what was the other big issue there? It continues to be an issue how the planes are not being spread out. So the noise is spread over multiple neighborhoods. The FAA is insistent that they do what's called a rail, where the planes all come in on the same approach. So some neighborhoods are being significantly affected by that, and the FAA doesn't have much interest in changing that. That would have to come through Congress. We also discussed, San Jose is not a member of this group, even though almost every other city in Santa Clara County and in Santa Cruz County, there's members as well. San Jose said they would join, but they wanted seven spots on the board, and there was an unwillingness to let them have that many seats at the table. I also attended the Legislative Committee, and as the Vice Mayor said, it was very disappointing that Jim Bell's, Senator Jim Bell's SB 5 was vetoed by the governor. That was the one housing bill that really would have had an impact on building more affordable housing, and that was vetoed, unfortunately.
Can I add that bills like SB 330 that the governor signed, this bill significantly weakens local governments' ability to make sure that the project would give us, would maintain good quality of life. And this kind, that bill does not increase the possibility of more affordable housing. It just gives developers more power.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
And like Councilmember Paul, I attended the Audit Committee meeting where we talked about the divestment. I won't repeat all that. And my other items were not committee assignments, so I will speak about those at a future time. So now we are on to the consent calendar. And so I have cards that would like to pull Item 6 and 7. Well, there's only three items on there, so I don't think anybody wants to pull Item 5.
Like to move Item 5.
Okay, I'll second.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so we are on to Item 6, the Mitigation Fee Act. Let's see, everything else here is on Carmen Bridge. Okay, so I do have one card here. Lisa Warren.
Hello again. So the reason I asked that this be pulled, and I know I'm not the only one that requested that, is that this is a review of development impact fees for the city, and it goes over, among other things, below-market-rate housing, parks dedication fees, transportation impact fees, and funds that have come in from several projects. And it deserves, I believe, public discussion. And based on observations of various study sessions with Planning Commission and Council, I believe that the city and its residents would be best served if the Planning Commission reviewed and discussed the 31 pages in a public meeting prior to a City Council discussion in public. If you preferred a joint meeting with both the Planning Commission and City Council, that's an option also, but my request is that this goes to discussion for Planning Commission first. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. You were the only person that wanted to pull that one. Would someone like to move this item, Item 6?
I'll move it.
All right, I'll second. We vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we are on to Item 7. This is to accept the Carmen Road Pedestrian Bicycle Bridge Feasibility Study Report. Just to be clear, this is not to authorize construction or design or allocate money in the budget. It's just to approve the feasibility report that was already done. Since I have so many cards on this, I think this will warrant a staff report.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. Roger Lee, Director of Public Works. I also have to my right here David Stillman, our Transportation Manager. And we'll get started with the report here. So this first slide shows what project the Carmen Road Bridge Bicycle Feasibility Study examined and why. It's a grade-separated structure on Stevens Creek Boulevard, just east of Foothill and west of, say, Farlap or west of Orange. And the project, if it were authorized, which as the mayor correctly pointed out, that's not what is being discussed this evening, this is only the feasibility study, would provide a separated crossing of Stevens Creek Boulevard that would potentially provide access to the schools nearby. I'll point out in the map here shortly where those schools are, neighborhoods, and also the parks. The study also, in our bike-ped plan, it ranked as a Tier 2 project. And in our pedestrian plan of 2018, the study ranked as a Tier 1 project. The project was not included in our fiscal year 1718 budget, but on March 6th of 2018, council did allocate $1,000 for a feasibility study, and that is what staff is bringing back this evening for your review and for your acceptance. As I mentioned, you know, it is only for the feasibility, so we aren't requesting any funds for anything to go further than this. That would only happen unless council were to request it to be prioritized, the design and construction of the project ahead of other prioritized projects that are in our bike and ped plans. So accordingly, no budget is being requested. You know, as stated in our August 20th study session to council on how bike and ped projects are scheduled, projects are evaluated on a number of criteria. And the next two slides, I'll just show them very briefly, you know, just discuss how the scheduling occurs in the future. And so that's not where this project is. But this project would be, it would be evaluated with all the other bike and ped projects in future CIP requests that would be coming to council. And this was shown on the 20th, and this project would follow the same type of timeline. But we don't anticipate that this project will be considered or recommended to council anytime, anytime soon. And this is just another flow chart that we had of inputs that go into a project, becoming an actual CIP project, which this is not being recommended for at this time. This next slide, this will provide some perspective as to where the feasibility study had the location of the bridge to be. Stevens Creek Boulevard is this area, I don't know if my pointer's working here. Yeah, there we go. That's Stevens Creek Boulevard, running east and west. Of course, north is up on this slide. Foothill Boulevard is here on the west, and you'd have, Orange Avenue would be here on the east. The, I think for reference, you know, just one of the nearby schools, you have Stevens Creek Elementary School is up here, and Tri-School Area, Kennedy, Montevista, and Lincoln Elementary are here. The closest protected crossing now is, there's one here at Foothill and Stevens Creek Boulevard. Clear that, it's getting a little bit confusing. And also, there's one here at Orange. Many of you may be familiar with the crossing that's at Farlap, would be about in this area here as well, but there's no signal there currently now. So the idea is that this bridge, if it were authorized and constructed, would be able to help serve the upwards to 300 Stevens Creek Elementary students who go to school, you know, of course, here at this school, but live down here. Or the nearly 600 students that go to school in this area here that live, that live up here. So that would be one of the goals the project may be able to help with. And then for reference, Stevens Creek Boulevard has about 10,000 vehicles per day, and the predominant speed of Stevens Creek Boulevard is 40 miles an hour. The next slide, you know, gives a, sort of drills down some on what it could look like and where Carmen Road is. So it's, I think it's about 125 feet span across this area here. And if you were to look at more of a street view of what that could look like, it could be either steel girder bridges you see here in the lower right, or a steel tide arch on the upper. And I show these two because we had some community meetings, and these two types of bridge, bridges were, they polled positively with the community members that were at those community events. And so, speaking about the community events, I'll have David take the presentation over for here, and he can discuss the effort made to solicit community input and to characterize the comments that we have received to date.
Thank you, Roger. As Roger just mentioned, we did a public outreach campaign as part of this feasibility study process. We held two public meetings in the vicinity of the project, one back in January of this year and one in May. Both these meetings were in an open house format, where we had tables set up with display boards around the tables. We started each of the public meetings with a brief presentation on the project with a Q&amp;A, and then opened it up for the public to wander around, look at the display boards, and ask staff questions. We had about 28 attendees at the first public meeting and 47 at the second. In both of these public meetings, we had passed around comment cards. In both of these public meetings, we had passed around comment cards and asked all attendants to provide comments, questions, whatever they may have, on the comment cards and return them back to staff so that we could include them in the study and evaluate the concerns that we heard. In the second meeting, part of what we asked was a preference on bridge type, which Roger just mentioned in a previous slide, the two choices that came out at the top of that list. And I'm gonna just skip ahead a couple slides and go back after this one. Just to summarize some of the comments that we heard at the public meetings, some of the cons for the project. We heard concerns about the safety and security for the adjacent properties. Both sides of Carmen, both sides of Stevens Creek Boulevard are cul-de-sacs currently, and there are concerns about people walking through the neighborhoods that wouldn't ordinarily be there. Aesthetics of the bridge, how it would look going over Stevens Creek Boulevard, concerns about the costs of the bridge, and whether the bridge was even necessary at all. Perhaps people could use one of the existing protected crossings of Stevens Creek Boulevard or the pet-actuated lights at Farlap. We also heard from people that were in favor of the project. They support it as a safe route for children to cross Stevens Creek Boulevard that are attending one of the three schools in the area that would help open up the neighborhood, which is currently bisected by Stevens Creek Boulevard. People would be more inclined to get out and walk and explore the neighborhoods, and it would also help to reduce vehicle traffic in the area. So the feasibility study evaluated six different types of bridge structures: a steel girder, steel Pratt truss, steel Howe truss, a steel-tight arch, a steel-inclined arch, and a clear-span girder. Those may not mean much to those in here, the room who aren't architects or structural engineers, but the feasibility study presents each of those designs pretty clearly, along with some renderings and the pros and cons of each one of those. Only the clear-span girder was infeasible because of ADA access issues on both approaches to the bridge, along with the fact that we wouldn't be able to maintain a proper clearance over Stevens Creek Boulevard with that bridge. But the other five are feasible structures. The costs for each of those range from, on the low end, to about 1.25 million up to 2 million at the high end. There isn't a huge difference in cost between the different types of bridges. They range a little bit, but a couple hundred thousand dollars might separate the low end from the high end on those. All of the alternatives, regardless of the bridge type, have some impacts to utilities in the area and potential encroachment onto private property. And I can show you here on this slide what the private property impacts are. You'll notice on the north side of the bridge here, the property 10036 right there wraps around to the bottom of the cul-de-sac. There's also a little sliver of 10045 that wraps around the bottom of the cul-de-sac from the other direction. This here is the bridge. In order to connect the bridge to Carmen Road on the north side, it would encroach onto one or both of those properties, and we would need easement rights from those properties in order to construct the bridge. We have been in discussions with both of those property owners. The property owners at 10045 have indicated that they would be willing to continue discussions with the city. The property owner at 10036, at this point, is not willing to continue discussions with the city for an easement. And I will turn it back over to Roger.
Just to clarify, so that encroachment, could you show the map again? So this part, most of this part is still city property, right?
Yes, that's right.
It's only a very tiny sliver here that will need easement from the neighbors.
Correct.
And this part is all city property also?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Are you finished? Okay.
Yes.
So again, this is only to approve the feasibility study that's already been completed. But I do have about 25 cards here. So everyone will get to speak. Try to keep it brief.
I want to point out that I object to the concept that this type of report should be put on consent agenda. This is not the, this is the first time this report is on the council agenda. The March 2018 meeting was a CIP meeting. This project wasn't even discussed. And so when this type of project is, even when the report is done, it's not just a report. I think it deserves a staff presentation and a discussion on what options are considered and what more needs to be done if we were to proceed or not. It shouldn't be just be slid under consent because it's a report. I hope we don't do that in the future. Thank you.
Okay, so...
Point of clarification. Is staff looking for any feedback from us tonight whatsoever on whether we? I mean, that's not even on the agenda item, right?
It's just to approve the already completed feasibility study.
Right.
This is not a debate on the merits or demerits of proceeding.
We're not talking about funding it. We're not talking about whether to continue it. All we're doing is saying, here's a study that was completed.
Correct.
All right.
And now we're up to 26 cards.
It's important to know what open issues are there if we were to continue and what concerns people have and are they addressed in the report.
Right. Okay. So first, I have Stephanie Miller and it looks like Jake Miller, followed by Cade Feldman and Tanith Feldman, followed by, I can't read this, but Aruthya Sashadin and kids. So welcome, Stephanie Miller and Jake Miller.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I understand that this doesn't mean that this is being built or that it's gonna happen, but we'd like to express our views as to why we think this is an important structure to build. Jake would like to say a few words first.
Hi, my name is Jake Miller. I go to Stevens Creek Elementary. Every morning, I ask my mom if I can go walking or biking to school by myself, and she says, "No, it is not safe. The main roads are too busy, and the Carmen Bridge might finally let me."
So the main reasons I would like to see this bridge come to fruition, number one, are safety. Second would be for health and fitness of our children, and also to help with the friendships that our children are building on both sides of that bridge. Currently, so we are Cupertino residents. We lived on Mira Vista Avenue on the south side of Stevens Creek Boulevard. As he said, he goes to Stevens Creek. We really strongly want to support walk-bike Cupertino. Our school every Wednesday morning has a walk and roll, and the kids are competing for the Golden Sneaker for those kids who actually try to get to school not driving. And we want to support these efforts. But being where we live and how we have to get to school, we have to cross over their go-along Foothill Boulevard with all the traffic and the large trucks that are constantly up and down that road, or we have to go across Stevens Creek. For us to cross at Stevens Creek and Foothill takes us way out of the way. And so when we've done it, we tend to play a little game of Frogger and hope that we can get safely across the street with my two other children and Jake. So if we had that bridge there, it would be much safer for us to get across. Additionally, it helps get the kids out of the cars and onto the roads with either biking or walking, which is good for their health. As a physician, a pediatrician, I strongly support kids getting outside and exercising. And finally, we have friends on both sides. He has friends that even though he will be finishing at Stevens Creek this year as a fifth grader, I still have a three-year-old who needs to go through the process as well. So they have friends on both sides of the road. If we had a bridge there, we could very easily get there without having to deal with the safety issues of crossing Stevens Creek at Foothill. So thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Cade Feldman with Tanith Feldman, followed by, and I can't, still can't read this, Arunitha Sashadin and kids, followed by Julie Orr. Welcome, Cade and Tanith.
Hello. Why I support the Carmen Bridge is because it would be much safer, faster, and easier to walk, bike, or any of those other things to go to school. It would also be a less confusing route. It would, I have so, also, a lot of people have so many friends on the other side of the bridge, and also, when I go to Kennedy, I will ride my bike to school like my brother does. I'm hoping my friends could ride with me from the other side of the bridge. With the Carmen Bridge, they can. And also, it would be a much faster route so kids can go home faster, do their homework faster, and get to play sooner and longer. Carmen Bridge will connect our community. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Very well stated. Welcome.
Hello, City Council members. I would like to ask that you support the Cameron Bridge project. Cameron Bridge would be an important part of a safe route to school. For example, right now, walking or riding to Stevens Creek Elementary is scary even for my mom. With zooming cars by, with cars zooming by, if there was a bridge, we could just rock right over them. It would also be faster. Like my brother says, every second counts. You don't want to be late for school. It would also be safer for kids and grownups, walking their dogs and riding their bikes around the community. It would connect us. Thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you. Well done. Next, Arunitha Sashadin and kids, followed by Julie Orr, followed by John Jensen, Vassav Malassi, and Dimitri Versak. I can't pronounce it, but welcome. So welcome. And how do you pronounce your name?
Amrittha Sashadri.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. So I want to support the Carmen Street Bridge as well. I have three fifth graders that'll be aging out of Stevens Creek, but we will be heading straight to Kennedy after that. And for us to cross Stevens Creek, we're on the, I guess, the north side of Stevens Creek. So currently, we don't have to cross Stevens Creek to get to Stevens Creek Elementary, but we will have to cross it to get to Kennedy and Montavista. And that is a really dangerous intersection, I think, between even on Orange and Bub, and then the, there's no traffic light on Farlap either, which are the two routes that we could use to get across. And even walking there is very dangerous. We tell the kids to look like five times, because those cars come speeding down both sides of that hill to the bottom there. It's a really dangerous intersection, and this bridge would really help with that. But I'm gonna let my children speak as well.
Hello, I'm Shreya Sashadri, and I support this bridge because it'll be a much safer route to school, and it'll help me get to school faster and quicker, and it'll, so, it'll waste my, all my energy that I have, and that school will help too. And then I can get home faster than the usual route that I take. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nyla Gehani, and I go to Stevens Creek Elementary. And I bike and walk to school every day, and I get kind of nervous on the big crosses. So I would appreciate a safer route going to school, and it would help get to friends in a quicker and safer way, and maybe I could even go by myself next year when I go to Kennedy. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Katia, and I would, and it would be really nice to have the bridge because, as Nyla said, that we have a lot of friends that are on the other side, and it's, we bike a lot together to school most Tuesdays, and that's why I think the bridge is good, so it's safer.
Hi, my name is Aria Sashadri. I go to Stevens Creek Elementary. On some Tuesdays and some Fridays, my sisters and I bike to school with my dad, and maybe sometimes, Nyla. He drops my sisters and I off at 9:00 a.m. and comes back at 2:30 or 3:30. And, but, crossing Stevens Creek is very dangerous from where we live. And like Katia and Nyla said, it'll be easier to reach some friends 'cause with the bridge, and it'll be safer. And I, I'm really scared of crossing it, so I wish that there'll be some, the bridge to keep me safe. Thank you.
Ask, where do you usually cross it? Where do you usually cross it that's dangerous? It's the Orange?
So usually, so when we go to Stevens Creek, we don't have to cross Stevens Creek because we're on the north side, so we're on Madera, all the way at the end of Man and Farlap. But when they go to Kennedy, we will have to cross, and so we'll either do it at Orange, which is what I would prefer because there's an actual traffic stop there. But where you, where we walk to the Stevens Creek Trail, we come down Farlap, and we cross at the bottom of Stevens Creek there where they have the pedestrian walkway. And it is, I mean, I know you guys have the flashing lights up, but it's still extremely dangerous. Even with those flashing lights, so many cars just, they come barreling down from either, from Foothill down that hill, and it's like, you literally have to stop cars.
So Orange is safer. Can you get to Orange safely and then cross?
We can, but even then, you've got, you've got, you know, you've got the cross traffic. You've got people in the mornings, because I take that intersection to go to work, and I see all the traffic that goes through there. People, there are kids crossing, and there are cars turning onto Stevens Creek. They're not always paying attention, because I take that same intersection to work. So it's, I mean, to think about having them bike to school every day to Kennedy or Montavista is really scary because I don't want anything to happen. If they have to go every day, twice a day, back and forth, it's a dangerous crossing to do every single time. The bridge would really make a difference. And also, it takes it back to the traffic and the illegal U-turns that are in that tri-school area. I mean, you would, with that bridge, you would allow for more foot traffic and bike traffic to get over to that area instead of having cars actually go in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
None of the buttons are working. Okay. Next, we have Julie Orr, followed by John Vassav and Dimitri, followed by Yu Lin. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Julie Orr. I live on Cupertino Road, right next to the bridge, and I just wanted to voice my support for it. Currently, I walk my two children and four more to Stevens Creek Elementary every day. So we have six kids that walk. And a lot of the parents have expressed they'd like to continue that to middle school and high school, and that bridge would make it a lot safer. One of the neighbors has an older brother who bikes, and he crosses at the crosswalk every day down there, and his parents have expressed that they're worried about him. Another neighbor, two doors down, has two girls in a middle school that cross at the crosswalk, and same thing, they're worried about them. It's not very safe. So I just wanted to support the bridge for myself and also my neighbors. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, I have John Vassav and Dimitri, followed by Yu Lin, followed by Will Flueeling. Welcome. And you can each have three minutes if you need it. Hopefully, you won't need it.
I'm John Jensen, and I live on Carmen Road. I went to Stevens Creek Elementary, and I walked to school every day in fourth and fifth grade, except when it rained. Sometimes I jaywalked, well, which is literally not safe. Most times, I used the Farlap crosswalk, but I don't think the drivers could see the crosswalk lights because they didn't really stop for us. I'm happy to have the Carmen Bridge because it would make it safer and easier to cross. My dad rides his bike to work in Mountain View every day, and he'd probably use the Carmen Bridge to bike to work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Vassav Malassi. I live on Scenic Boulevard, close to the Stevens Creek Crosswalk by Blackberry Farm. Cars have hit people walking and biking, and my family has helped the injured until the ambulance came. We also know of families whose child was biking and was hit by a car. They moved away from Cupertino after that. It's scary, and I hope it doesn't happen ever again. Please don't wait for something really bad to happen and build the Carmen Bridge and make crossing Stevens Creek safe. Thank you.
I'm Dimitri Versak, and I live near Carmen Road. I walk to Stevens Creek Elementary with John and Vassav. My dad also rides his bike every day to work. Carmen Bridge would make it safer for my family when we walk and bike. Thank you for listening and working so hard for the city.
Okay, thank you. Well stated. Yu Lin, first, followed by Will Flueeling, followed by Pamela Hawks. Welcome, you.
Good evening. Good evening, City Councilor and City...
Good evening, city councilor and city manager. My name is Yiliu. I came here tonight to speak to support the Carmen project, Bridge project. So, I actually live very close to Stevens Creek's Elementary School. So, we actually don't have to cross, you know, Stevens Creek's to go to the school. But, you know, me and my husband, we used to take the kids across Stevens Creek's to go to the Blackberry Farm. And we have to go through, you know, the crossing at the Farlap. So, that crossing, you know, it has a traffic, pedestrian traffic light, but the problem is that traffic light is not always functioning. So, we have time come to there and just, like, no traffic. And, you know, like, the slope on the Stevens Creek is very steep. I think it's probably around 30 to 40 degrees. So, it can imagine, you know, it's very hard for the car to stop there, and also, it's very hard for the driver to spot the kids and the pedestrians. So, every time when we try to cross that, you know, crossing, it's just like we are so nervous, you know, because the kids, they sometimes they don't realize how dangerous it is when they cross the street, you know. So, I, you know, so with this Carmen Bridge, you know, I can imagine, you know, all the kids, they can go to the Blackberry Farm easily, don't have to worry about their safety when they cross the street. Thank you for listening.
Hey, thank you. Will Flueeling, followed by Pamela Hawks, followed by Rich Williams. Welcome, Will.
Hi, thanks for having me, Mayor Scharf and council. It's November, so I want to say, I want to keep it in the theme of thankfulness and being gracious, right? So, thank you for the staff for putting so much energy into this project so far. I'm going to speak tonight on behalf of the Stevens Creek Elementary Parent Teacher Organization. I'm the co-president there, and I have some friends here with me, and I want to thank them as well. So, I'm very supportive of this Carmen Bridge project, as are the 500-plus students that go to Stevens Creek. That school is going to be consistent enrollment. It's one of the few that isn't declining so bad. So, we're going to have generations of students that can use this bridge down the road. So, let's keep that in mind. This is also Tier One and Tier Two, as they said, on the Bike and Ped Plan, so it's up there. I want to share a story. So, my son and I, he's a first grader at Stevens Creek, and on Wednesdays, as people have mentioned, walk and roll. We get on our bike, and he doesn't ride alone yet. He has a little ride, a trail, a tag-along with me. And so, we're cruising up Foothill because I live behind the Cupertino Bike Shop on Merriman, so I'm very impacted by this. So, we go up Foothill. All these quarry trucks come rumbling by, all these distracted commuters come cruising by. It's scary. It's frightening. I grew up biking to school from kindergarten on, but I grew up in a rural town of upstate New York. Things were a little different 30 years ago. So, I would still like to empower my son William to be able to do this same thing. But right now, I don't trust it. I'm afraid for his life. And we've got to remember that you can't put a price tag on a life, especially that of a kid, okay? So, let's think of future generations with this project. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Will. Pamela Hawks, followed by Rich Williams, followed by Nisha Tombe. Welcome, Pamela.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. You will notice by my accent that I am not native to this area. And I have been rather surprised at the amount of difficulty there seems to be about this overpass. But I am a little concerned, as you can see from my appearance, that it might be difficult for older people to negotiate. I can see these sprightly youngsters having a wonderful time bouncing along, but what consideration has been given to assist people like me in this undertaking? Because it does seem rather more feasible to stay on the ground. I know the traffic here is horrendous, but we pedestrians can't always manage stairs or severely sloped access. So, has the staff in their assessment made any report on this?
Right. Can you mention, I believe it's supposed to be ADA compliant?
It is. You know, that's correct. The bridge improvement itself would be ADA compliant.
Is the report available for people to see?
Yes, it's an attachment to the staff report we're presenting.
Where would I go?
On the city's website, you can find it. There's even a hard copy I saw in the lobby.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Rich Williams, followed by Nisha Tombe, followed by Jian He. Welcome, Rich.
Thank you, council and staff, and I appreciate the forum. Councilman Chow, just to address the question you had about Orange in regards to our particular neighborhood and the feasibility of getting down to Orange to use that crossing. Tough at actual best. If you're trying to mobilize two, three kids in the morning, this is an alternative to driving. It's so easy to drive. To throw them in the car and get in traffic with everyone else and line up, this is encouraging walking and bicycle riding. It's a good alternative, and it should be promoted and encouraged, and this bridge does that. I spoke with Councilman Seeks one-on-one. I voiced my sentiment and support for this and tried to influence him. I hope I can influence you. 10 years ago, we didn't have this traffic on the road to the level we have it. Five years ago, we didn't. If you look at Waze giving shortcuts and sending people through Cupertino Road and all the increased quarry traffic from Stevens Creek Quarry and Lehigh Quarry, it's impacted it, and it's tough to navigate as kids. I no longer have horses in the race. My kids are no longer going to that school, but I still drive through there, and I see these kids with their parents crossing perilously. Years ago, and I also want to acknowledge Larry and his efforts. It was 10 years ago, I think, or eight years ago, I met him when he was talking about this bridge, and here we are years later, and I hope this can happen. For the residents that have issue, the few that will be inconvenienced by this bridge, I just ask you to think about the many, the many, many, many parents and kids this will benefit. I hope this is prioritized and really thought through, and talk to the community members, and I hope more get up and speak and explain the benefits. If there's issues that need to be discussed about crime, well, I would argue we have very little. I don't think this is going to bring any new crime. So, I hope you strongly consider this and prioritizing this, and I thank you again for this forum and the ability to come up here and speak to all of you. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. Nisha Tombe, followed by Jian He, followed by Carol Stanek. Welcome, Nisha.
Hi, mayor and council members. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Nisha Tombe. I am the chairwoman for the Parks and Rec Commission, but today I will not be speaking on behalf of the commission. I will be speaking as a resident of Cupertino. I live on the south side of Stevens Creek. I attended Stevens Creek Elementary School, Kennedy, and Montevista. And I can tell you without a doubt that this bridge will have a very widespread impact that is nothing but positive. To be able to give kids and students access to getting to their schools in a way that is outside of a car is going to decrease traffic, promote health, and also promote community. So, please consider this project. I know this is, you're not voting today on funding this project. You're just accepting the report. But as this goes through the process, I would highly encourage you to be supportive of these efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being brief. Jian He, followed by Carol Stanek, followed by Shawnee Kleinhouse. Yes, welcome.
So, good evening, everyone, and city council members and staff, city staff members. So, my name is Jian. I serve on the advisory board for walk-by Cupertino. So, I lived near the Carmen Bridge neighborhood for 15 years. So, on behalf of my family, I would like to thank you and your team for investing your time and effort and money for the city in the Carmen Bridge feasibility study. Many thanks to the city staff for working so hard on this study, and then for holding community outreach meetings, and then listening to residents and documenting all the questions and suggestions. And these are the very important steps to make sure this project will be successful. So, in 2017, when my children still attend Stevens Creek Elementary School, so several friends and I, actually, some of my friends over there, so we got involved in this petition drive, and so, to support this project. So, many of our neighbors and parents in this elementary school, we signed a petition, and two weeks ago, we attended a master match event over there. And then there are more parents signing up, and then many parents also shared their concern about heavy traffic and then walk-by safety. And so, I created this map for everyone to see. Can the people see that? Okay. So, this map shows the location of supporters around the Carmen Bridge neighborhoods. Okay, is that clear? Okay. So, the image in the red box over here shows the daily rush hour traffic on this street, on this Stevens Creek Boulevard. An image in the green box over there shows option number five design, I think, proposed as a result of the study, feasibility study. So, you can see many supporters actually live near this Carmen Road. So, please vote yes to accept the Carmen Bridge feasibility study result, and look forward to seeing the project will make progress and to the next phase and become reality for our community. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Carol Stanek, followed by Shawnee Kleinhouse, followed by Bethany. I can't read the last name. Welcome, Carol.
Hi, city council. Thank you for having me. I am on the Parks and Rec Commission, but tonight I am speaking as a resident and a community member who lives very close to where this access would be. I think if the red circle had been drawn just a little bit farther, my house would definitely have been in it. I drove my kids to Stevens Creek School down Foothill every day for probably 10 years, and you know that trucks and kids on bikes don't mix well. And so, I want to just show my support for this project, and I hope we move it forward. I hope that everyone's here tonight. We'll come again in the spring when we start talking about budgeting and next steps. And I'd really like to thank the children who were here tonight, speaking from their hearts, and I think they did a great job. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Shawnee Kleinhouse, followed by Bethany, followed by Sunnyview Manor. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf, council members. I'm Shawnee Kleinhouse with Santa Clara Valley Odebon Society. The birds don't need this bridge to get through, but there are bridges that cause a lot of mortality because of the way they're constructed. There was a discussion by the planning commission about bird-safe design, and my only request on this bridge is not to have any transparent materials that could be in the way of birds flying along the street. Handrails, guardrails, other screens and fences, just don't have very thin structures or transparent structures. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bethany, followed by Sunnyview Manor. For some reason, I have Will Flueeling again here. So, followed by Byron Provignu. Welcome, Bethany. Is Bethany still here? Okay, not here. Sunnyview Manor. Okay, not here. Byron, welcome.
City council, thank you for this opportunity. I lived near Stevens Creek School and have for 38 years. My kids went to the school. I don't have kids walking to school anymore, but my wife and I walk over to the parks often, and she's a birder, and they have lots of bird boxes there. It's wonderful. So, we would use the bridge, along with the 998 students that are cited in the report. So, I'd like to give this one more dimension that hasn't been mentioned so far. There's 10,850 cars that go on that section of Stevens Creek over to Foothill daily. But when you go around the corner and add the trucks in, there's 16,000 vehicles now going on Foothill. And you need to have the foresight to look into the future with Lehigh being approved and saying, gee, we need to do something about what's only going to be more dense traffic. So, that's one thing. And the traffic that goes into Stevens Creek, I don't know whether you're aware of it or not, it's all on Foothill because there's one way in and one way out. They come in Vista Knoll, they go to Ainsworth, drop their kids, and they come out on Starling with the light. It's a conveyor belt in the morning. You can't get out at the nine and three. So, reducing the traffic by allowing kids to take those 998 kids to not be car rides will make a material difference in the future. Thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Linda Wagner, followed by Harlan Jackson, followed by Ganesh. Welcome, Linda. Linda still here? No. Harlan Jackson, followed by Ganesh, followed by Keith Craft. Is that the second one? Okay, so none of those are here. Next, we have Richard Lowenthal, followed by, can't read this, something, maybe Ganes, followed by Tom Scanu. Welcome, former Mayor Lowenthal.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Scharf, for having me, Vice Mayor Chow and the council. First of all, I want to show my appreciation for you funding this feasibility study in the first place, which you did last year, and we appreciate the foresight and looking for opportunities and for trouble. So, thank you for doing that. I'm very much in favor of this project, should it come before you. My connection is that I like, well, following, you did a survey by Parks and Rec Commission of the residents and what they wanted in Parks and Rec, and the first thing they wanted was more walking opportunities, and the second thing was more access to open space. So, this would allow you to walk from the Blackberry Farm area over to Linda Vista Park and Stevens Creek Elementary, and conversely, walk from the Linda Vista Park over to Blackberry Farm. Right now, Stevens Creek Boulevard might as well be a wall because when you're walking and you reach that, it seems impenetrable. So, this would make a great opportunity. From the Stockelmeier House, you'd walk up Scenic Boulevard, and that connects your right to Carmen Road, so you could walk across this over to Linda Vista Park. It'd be great. It would make the most of the Parks and Rec facilities that we have and create more opportunities for people to walk and enjoy the city. So, I'm in favor. But first of all, I want to thank you for doing the feasibility study in the first place.
Hey, thank you. Former Mayor Lowenthal. Next, I believe this is Sam Guinness, followed by Tom, followed, wow, another one duplicate, followed by Jeff Paulson. Is Sam here? Okay. How about Tom Scanu? Welcome. Please tell me how to pronounce it.
Close enough.
Okay.
My name's Tom Scanle. I've been a resident in Cupertino for about 40 years. Thank you to the council for listening to everybody tonight. I've been a strong supporter of safe pedestrian access for students. For many years, I supported the installation of the first set of traffic mitigation bumps in Cupertino many years ago. I was also a strong supporter of the scenic circle access for Montevista and Kennedy. I'm here tonight to support the Carmen Street Bridge. A few years back, when taking a walk in my neighborhood, I unfortunately saw a young boy get hit by a car while trying to jaywalk across Stevens Creek Boulevard in order to get to Stevens Creek School. Fortunately, he was more shaken up than injured, but I'd hate to see that happen to any other child coming up. The Carmen Street Bridge will make a lot of safe, convenient, and cost-effective way for the students of Stevens Creek, Kennedy, and Montevista to get to school. I also think it'll have a strong positive effect on those of us who are walkers and like to walk around the neighborhood. I'd like to ask your support to please move this project forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Jeff Paulson. That's the last card. If anyone else wants to speak on that, you can line up behind Jeff. Welcome. Welcome, Jeff.
Jeff Paulson, Cupertino. Thank you, mayor and council members, for considering this. I'll be brief. First of all, as a former founding member of the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission, I appreciate the staff's time working on this, and I highly support this as a means to encourage walking, bicycling, and reduce traffic. bicycling, and reduce traffic. Second, as one who's had family members at Sunny View Retirement Community, as one who may in the hopefully far distant future live there myself, I think it would provide a wonderful opportunity for the folks who live there to walk over and enjoy the facilities at McLellan Ranch. That's all, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Did I miss your card?
You called me earlier.
Oh, okay.
I wasn't sure if you called me or said to get in line, but Keith Kraft.
Oh, okay, great.
I spoke earlier about congestion on Wilkinson, behind Kennedy, and as far as this Carmen Road. Anything that could potentially reduce the number of people driving their kids to school in that area would be supported by me. We just need to reduce that congestion. And if I can add one more story. I was born and raised in Skokie, Illinois, 15 miles north of Chicago. We moved into a house in 1952, and the high, the junior high that I went to was across Eden's Expressway. And Eden's Expressway was a six-lane highway going from downtown Chicago up towards Milwaukee. And we were bused to school. The family only had one car, so there was no parents to drive people and drop them off. We were bused to school, but if we stayed for after-hours activities and we missed the bus coming back, we would have to walk home. And rather than walking two blocks north to cross the expressway, on the bridge, we would hop the highway. We're crossing six lanes of traffic in 1960. I'm a living example of stupid things that junior high kids would do without their parents knowing. So, playing Frogger across, it's just too bad that school start times in rush hour happened to coincide. Crossing Stevens Creek at maybe 11 o'clock in the afternoon, 11 o'clock in the morning or 1 o'clock might not be so bad, but at school times in rush hour, it's, so I'm urging you from a safety perspective also to support that bridge. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, that's all the cards we have. Now, we can bring it back to council, if anyone has any comments. Councilmember Willie.
So, I think, I think the feasibility study is really pretty good, and I also think we're hearing from a lot of residents, which I think is great. Safety is definitely a priority, and so I'm a little concerned that if Farlap is the current method to get across, I would ask city manager slash staff if they shouldn't look at putting in a light there. I mean, a bridge is, you know, a ways down the road. If we have kids that are currently using that regularly with that type of traffic, I would ask that we actually look at that and see if we shouldn't put in a better crossing light to ensure that we're not going to wind up with people getting hurt. So, that being said, for the safety, I'd like to suggest that we have a study session before we get to the budgeting process, you know, early next year, so that we can truly understand, you know, the budget that we have to work with and the bike and ped projects, and how to make the most effective use of the money that we do in fact have. So, again, the study session that kind of helps us to understand, you know, the safety and bike ped projects, and how we can make the most use of the residents' tax dollars that we have. And then the last one, if this is going to be high on the list, I hope that there'll be early resident engagement. I read in the report, the open houses that they had, but from history, what we see, residents are not happy when they don't hear until, you know, the tail end. And so, making sure all the residents that are in close proximity clearly understand that it is being considered, if that's what it winds up being, and we do get their feedback, pros and cons, and clearly let them know that we are very focused on the resident engagement. So, I'll leave it at that for tonight.
Okay, councilmember Paul.
I don't see any reason not to accept the report. I appreciate the members of the public who have come out tonight, as well as the many emails we've received over the course of the last week or so, and some of them are actually quite historically informative, so hopefully they're, you know, captured on the record. I think they are. So, thanks very much for coming out.
Okay, I'll go now. So, yeah, I don't see any reason not to accept this report. I hope if this project does go forward, we're able to apply for grant money from whoever has grant money, the county, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming out to speak on the importance of this project. I think many people know I was on the fence for the Riggnott Creek Pass project. It's not a trail. And because that improves an already pretty safe neighborhood street, it makes it slightly safer. However, I think this project is a lot more important than the Riggnott Creek Pass project because the alternative is a lot more dangerous. So, when it comes back to the council, I hope we take that into account, that we focus on projects that actually improve the safety of our bike paths a lot. Thank you.
Hey, councilmember Seeks.
Yeah, I had a question or two. So, we did receive through the engagement, some questions about why this couldn't be placed further down, which had been my question to staff and in previous public discussions on this, and I wonder if you might just entertain me for a bit here. If I'm, if I live up high, right, and I want to get over to, if I'm north of the thing and I want to get, and I live up high and I want to get to Kennedy or Montevista, Carmen works for me. If I live, though, further down the hill, it seems to me like I'm more inclined to want to go across at about the lowest point, because otherwise, I'm having to climb up the hill to get to Carmen, to go over Carmen, to then go back down the hill into the Stevens Creek catchment, and then go back up again to the schools. Can you comment about the feasibility of an alignment which is just slightly east of Carmen that might be a more natural thing for folks that are closer to the bottom of the hill, therefore more used?
Yes, I can talk about that some. There had been a prior study done in 2016 that looked at, is it possible to go under the existing Stevens Creek Bridge at Stevens Creek and to go have a tunnel? So, one was an undercrossing of the existing bridge, one was a tunnel just east of the bridge, and one was a tunnel that was just west of Farlap. The tunnel under the bridge was determined not feasible just because of the relocation of a sewer line and some other issues inside the creek bed. But what was determined to be possible was just west of Farlap, having a tunnel in that location, and it would, if you can imagine, access ramps that would be in front of the city-owned blush property that would go under the, you know, get down to grade, under the street, then come back up towards Farlap. The 2016 price for that, so it was possible, there was a, I know, a 48-inch storm drain line, a 21-inch storm drain line, and a 30-inch raw water line, Stevens Valley Water, that would all have to be relocated. It was about $3.2 million to do that at that time.
Compared to these, which are coming in at 1.2 to 1.9.
Yeah, and it didn't do, so once you're across, then how would you get up to say, you know, I guess you could go up the sidewalks and use the sidewalks, or if you wanted to connect and go up the creek to eventually get into Varian Park, to get on the backside of Stevens Creek Boulevard.
Yeah, of course. You'd want a direct connection to Varian and then to the school.
Right. There's private property involved to get to our property, so we'd have to negotiate that as well, and that wasn't included in that price.
I see, okay. Whereas, we're here with this, we're all in for 1.25 to 1.9, depending on the option. Is that right?
That's right.
Which includes what we project the cost of easement acquiring easements to be.
We'd have to add in the price to acquire the easements.
I see, okay. Well, you know, I really appreciate the public coming out clearly. Clearly, there's a lot of excitement in the community to make this connection, and I think as one grateful dad said it, is he still here? Grateful dad? We have to do a better job getting kids to be able to come to school under pedestrian power or bike power, and when we do that, our schools and the roads will be less crowded and our kids will get to school more energetic. So, I would be happy to move that we accept this report.
Great, I'll second.
Here is unanimously.
Great, so we've been going for two hours now, so why don't we take a short break until, let's say, 8:52.